Recovery money this year, but I think you're up and qualified for it again next year. And that kind of comes and goes. Your Title A, your Title 1A, Title 2A, Title 5 is roughly your math and reading types of things. You can also do tech out of the Title 5. Please Jen, tell me anything I missed. But you use it all for salaries. So as you look down through the expenses, it's all salary, all salary. Then you'll, the only other thing that's on here are your ESAR funds. And again, those will go away next year. You won't see them because we're done. They have to be sent out by. So if you look at your, again, the grant, the Title 1A expenses, all salary. There's nothing else there. Your ESAR 2, you had the eighty-one thousand, five sixty-six, eighty-nine left over in that. And it was spent on heat pumps. And remember, we had to purchase those ahead of time. Your ESAR 3, you have, you had spent so far, the forty-five, three eighty-four. And again, that was to finish off the heat pumps, leaving you with about twenty-six thousand left there. Uh, there was.
Can we get a, a copy and printout of this, Mary Ellen, on our ESAR money? Uh, we had twenty-three and then twenty-four. And could we get a little report of, you know, where that money went to over the two-year period?
Yeah. Your, um, and let's see. Reading recovery, the two thousand dollars that's there is an annual fee. Let me get it on the back page.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
It shows you seven hundred also.
Yep. And seven hundred in dollars. But generally, you don't have a whole lot of say over this. There's really, they tell us what we can use it on. But in my office, I continue to gain knowledge and keep learning. And so I said, let's get to the, the grant type of stuff. I want to start learning about that now.
The ESAR 3 wonder, I believe, was still a boiler. And twenty percent had been given to lost learn.
Yes.
Went to the LCOC.
Yep, twenty percent has to go to, uh, learning loss. And you do both after-school and summer.
And that's where we do the STEM projects. And so we track and we report on anything that we do with them on a monthly basis. Goes in what any of those we've had, had to have that, or what the project was, or the learning outcome, or all of those sorts of things.
And so if you see checks made out to the LCOC, that's what they're for. And you must do that, or you lose your ESAR money. You have to spend twenty percent on learning loss.
So like right now, Jennifer, we're seeing on Title 1, like you said, it's salary. So we pay their salary and you reimburse this amount.
Title 1's different than Title 3.
It's different, it's two different things. So that, the Title 1 is, is all school.
That's, that has nothing to do with LCOC. It's the ESAR funds that, for the lost learning, asked the LCOC to integrate within their after-school program and the summer recreation to make sure that there was a, a good percentage, and I was gonna say twenty-five percent of what we do with kids daily. And then of course, it goes over the course of weeks and months, is the STEM work. And so we incorporate the reading, the writing, the projects, you know, things like that. But we have to report on it to show what we did in order for us to be reimbursed for that.
The Title 1 is that, uh, uh, federal money?
It's, it's state money and it goes right to the school, has nothing to do with the LCOC.
Yeah, there's a whole other stuff.
I'm not talking about the LCOC. I'm talking about how, cause your writing, or you're involved in this. But Title 1 monies, uh, we have Title 1 staff. So we pay them out of our budget. And does this grant money reimburse that?
That's what that money's for.
Okay.
Definitely. And the one other thing I, I have skipped over, I'm sorry, is local entitlement. So at the very top of that, local entitlement. And it also is partway down, your first page, remember that's, so this is the federal part of the money that comes in for special ed. So that's your special ed money, IDEA. And, and then on our regular revenue sheet that you're used to looking at, remember, we get state subsidy also for special ed. So just, just wanted you to look at that. If you have questions, we will. But let's take a look at the general, you know, just our general revenue and expense report. This is the money that comes in from the state and from taxes. And whatever else might be on there. And he did change one thing before I, after we had talked about this. So mine might be slightly different from yours. Again, as you look down through here, the first column is just December. Only things that were posted in December. Second column is year-to-date, how much money you have spent totally from July 1 to net to, well, till the end of December. And then what you budgeted is the third column, and finally, what's left over. So if you have left over more than fifty percent, you're doing real well. Because we're officially fifty percent through the majority of the year. There is some money that, um, that we're not quite fifty percent through using because teachers get paid September through August. So we're a little off. But, um, so if it says that, then we're in good shape. And remember, on this last column, if it's in parentheses, it means that we're over. Okay? And so if you look at this first page, obviously, we're over on substitutes. And we've explained that before. If anybody needs to hear that again, I'm happy to do it. You're over, we, I've told you this before, on any of your insurances and any of your workers' comp, you are over on it. You, um, it was, not enough was budgeted for this year. So as you tick down through and see, um, parentheses, that's what you're looking at. And again, you don't have to look at this and understand everything tonight. If you have questions, we're happy to answer questions about budget.
Well, general fund, we've got thirty-one percent left there, is what you're saying.
Where is this now?
On the, in the percent, what remains, Jen.
No, that's how much has been used.
Okay.
That's how much has been used. So you're, if you go to the final end of your budget on the last page, you've used forty-four percent of your budget. So you're, you're fine, you're right on track. Because more than fifty percent of the school year is done. So you're right on track. So, you know, if you look, general expenses on the first page, you've used twenty-three point seven percent of them. Haven't even used a quarter of your funds there. Special education, right now, is only at fifteen point six percent. You've got substitute custodial is over, and that's because you paid a substitute to do custodial in the summer. You will notice that you're over on your rubbish removal. And I want to explain that. You pay two hundred dollars a month for your trash removal. But you had to have a roll-off dumpster come here and dispose of your tires. Yikes. And it was an eighteen-hundred-dollar bill, or nearly eighteen-hundred dollars. So you're over, but you had to do it. And we'll make it out in the rest of the, but remember, that's for the dumpster, two times. And it's for the disposal of those tires, it all costs money. So we're, we don't have a choice.
Um, can we put that to the roof project? Or no?
I don't know, that's a good question. I'll write that down and ask Chad. He'll know whether, there's all rules and regulations with it, you either can or you can't.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Because at first, we thought that one of the bills for the roofing materials came to us. And then we realized, oh no, that's, it says right on it, tire disposal. That, that's ours, we had to do that.
It was nine hundred each time you did it? Or eighteen hundred each?
It was about eighteen, the total cost was like eighteen hundred. Just under, I believe. And I think.
Eighty-eight.
I think that that is all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? No?
Nope, no, I'm sorry. I shook my head, but I didn't ask.
Old business? New business?
That is.
And LCOC updated our children and youth programs.
Yeah, so I, I will jump into that. I did want to just give two other updates relative to our, for the ceiling tiles. They are being installed. Um, many of them have to be cut down because the size, the build, age of the building necessitated a special order of, uh, oversized tiles that then need to be cut down a bit. So we're doing it room by room by room and working around the lighting, but it looks really nice.
Agreed.
Ones that are up. Um, and you can feel the difference in the air and the amount of dust. You know, you go in the kitchen and you don't have to wipe down the counters every time you go in there, with dust coming down. So that's really good. And to kind of go along with that, we did what I call a self-initiated request for an inspection from the Department of Health and Human Services, our child licensing inspector. The LCOC is a licensed childcare facility with the state of Maine. And just like I did with the fire marshal, I called him up and I said, you know, could you just come? And let us know what we're doing right, what we could do better, and if there's anything we're not doing. So we had a really good report today. She went through the whole thing, she spent three and a half hours with us, she met with the staff. And, uh, we got really high marks. So that was really, really nice. And they were really happy to see the ceiling tiles, because they work with the fire marshal. So they were really happy to see.
Have they been back yet?
He has not. And he said, just wait till you get them all up, then I'll come in. And I will let you know when it's gonna be there, maybe we can all walk through together.
Okay.
Because I think his one question is gonna be that real.
Yeah.
At the end. So that's gonna be the discussion. But really good marks. So thank you all for supporting that. It's nice to have ceiling and roof over our heads. Um, so I wanted to talk tonight, and I handed this out at the last meeting, but it, it was a busy meeting. So this is just a one-pager on, um, of what we, we're terming a youth program expansion. As many of you know, you know, LCOC, we do a lot with the littles. Consider the littles ages five to twelve, with occasional thirteen-year-olds in here and there. And we want to expand that. And we're approaching it two ways. The first, first thing we're doing is to give youth, middle and high school youth in our community, we want them to have a place to go. A place in the back where they can go, where they can feel safe, welcome, warm, comfortable, have some fun, and, and have, you know, hang out with each other. It's for social purposes. And then the second initiative is something I was asked to leave. But what I'm excited about is because I'm hoping that if we do it right, and I don't plan to do it just for one year, I wanna do it every year, that we also inspire our youth, that Lubeck is a place that they want to stay. And not only do they want to stay, but they can stay, and they have a future here. And we're gonna help them figure out what that is and get them there. So, very ambitious. Um, I think the board is happy about it, the LCOC, because they figure that's gonna make them hang around for a while, because it's not gonna be easy to get it done. The teen room is our, give them a place to go. It was grant-funded with the child savings bank. We've also had some private donors step forward and say, I'm in, I really think kids should have a place to go. There's new floors in there, we've had the room painted, the new ceiling tiles are in, and the furnishings, and ping-pong tables, and gaming systems, and little refrigerators and things are starting to arrive. And we're aiming to open that with a big open house the Friday of February vacation week. So, you know, our challenge is with the teen room, we've done a survey out to parents, parents, you know, what will the oversight be? How often will you be open? How will you monitor the bed and floor, bodies in the building? Will they just be in that room, or will they have access to the other rooms? I mean, we envision and we hope they'll have their teen room, but that the community room may also be open, so they're there. And that someone, likely me, will be in the kitchen, and there will be plenty of really good food for them to eat. Because as I recall, and it was a long time ago, my teenagers ate a lot of food. So, um, give them a place to hang out and go. We're gonna start with, we're hoping to open Friday, late afternoon, if early evening, Saturday, all afternoon. And then Sundays, we're gonna try to wrap around the skating. So when skating ends, a place that they can come and kind of chill out for a while after that. So we're trying to complement, because we love the skating thing, since everybody's loving that. So it's like, this gives them a place to go after, or a place to go before. And then also, doesn't stop the other programs we have, so that we don't have, we're tracking people coming in and out of the building that we really can't monitor, we need to monitor who's there to keep them safe. So this meeting with the Department of Health and Human Services, the other purpose of that was to say, our license, you know, we know what our license is, we're expanding, we're gonna start working with different age groups, what can and what we, what should we do to be safe. And to make sure that their experience is not only fun, but meets the requirements of our license as a childcare facility. So, you know, it's a work in progress. If anyone wants to call and talk about it, anyone has strong feelings about it, anyone wants to volunteer, could maybe monitor, um, we would like to hear from you. And we will let everyone know when we open it, because the open house will be for parents and kids, and for anyone that wants to come see. Um, so we're excited about that. The second piece is this working waterfront initiative. This was a call I received from the Gulf of Maine Research Institute, who is doing this initiative with four communities in Maine, and they want to move back to be one of those communities. And they want to engage middle and high school youth in answering the question. And it's really kind of like, I have a dream, right? In a perfect world, in your community, what do you think needs to happen for it to be healthy and for you to be happy there and to be a part of it? Where do you fit? And where do you see the community? And they were like, in fifty years. And I was like, that's a lot. So there was some funding to work on, we obviously, Gulf of Maine Research Institute, the marine and the fisheries component of that, is what they were focused on. So they said, we can give you a grant for this. And I said, well, that's great, um, but can we build out from there? So I designed a curriculum, which I can email to anyone that's interested in it, which certainly has the marine and the climate and, you know, weather-related changes to our community incorporated into it, using Gulf of Maine data and projects and mapping and all of that. But we've also incorporated a financial literacy component, they're gonna have career explanation, exploration components. They are going to go to Portland for a two-day, one-night field trip, where they will meet with the Portland cohort of teens that is doing the same project at the major conservancy office. And they're gonna have design engineers who design cities, break out with the kids and kind of pie in the sky, what does my city look like, and what could it look like if I put a castle here, or if I put, you know, a castle? They will answer a whole bunch of questions around all this. They will get to meet people in fields of conservation, stewardship, tourism, hospitality, real estate, business. We are hoping to get them to some board meetings, so that they could just see what's happening in their town, what does it mean? Um, and how could I be a part of that? They will receive a small stipend for the twelve-week project. They will also have a savings account established by the Child Savings Bank if they complete the project. Um, and we're hoping that if we could get twelve kids really engaged, that some of them, if not all of them, would be willing to be the counselors for next year's cohort. And do the same thing over and over and over again. Many of the groups I've talked with, the major conservancy, one of them, Gulf of Maine Research Institute, Cosmic Shoresports, Down East Coastal Conservancy, a lot of conservation groups. But Maine Fisheries Cooperative in Portland, Maynard Feeding Maynard, Maine Brains, a whole bunch of businesses and cooperatives in different areas of work, boat buildings, shipyards, have said, wow, you know, maybe we can get interns, maybe there'll be some internship opportunities. Maybe we can entice them to come and do, you know, to work with us. So a lot, again, still, it's pie in the ciphering. I'm a little, I was gonna watch it in December, and I said, I'm gonna help this with my daughter. I'm gonna take a breath, I'm gonna get the teen room open. Um, and so we will have an online application, paper application. I'm hoping to go speak with kids, I'm hoping to reach out to Tina and say, go, I'm speaking to the middle school kids, just all in one room. See if we can pique their interest. If I got twelve kids, I would be over the moon. If I can get more kids, I'm over the moon. If I get three kids, I'm over the moon. The idea is to get them started. Um, again, anyone that'd like to help, please let us know. Um, many of you, if you know, I'm looking around, I'm gonna be calling you. Um, and I think it's gonna be a really great opportunity to expand our base, certainly with the LCOC. I think we're really missing that, we're thinking as much, talk about this. But we're just missing, it's a gap. We have a senior social, a food pantry, our workshops, and our learning, but this is whole age group. We never see, other than walking around the building. So we're excited about it, we hope you are too. And, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How many, Jennifer, you've got the date line, how many students do you have signed up for?
We haven't opened the application yet, it opens this Friday.
That's got it. And I'd like to say too, Vicky has, uh, skating on the weekends and after, I have open gym for the kids, from three to five. And so.
That's great. Well, then, as, as teens, only middle school and high school would be able to come in. So, you know, it'll be, uh, it'll be, you know, I always say it's a, it's a right passage or privilege, right?
For the kids, it'll all look good for them.
It's gonna be really good. And I will tell you that that teen room looks, Tina, you saw the floor, it looks so nice, so stopping and look at it. It, it, it kind of makes the rest of the building, like, oh, maybe we should paint it back to the room. It gives you, you walk in it and you go, wow, this looks great, so. Good for them, good for them. Uh, what age is middle school? So middle school, seventh and eighth grade, seventh, eighth, and then high school. So it was a hard cutoff, it was like, when you say teen, you know, there were twelve-year-olds in seventh grade. So, you know, you just said, let's go with the grade. Let's go with grade, we'll see how we do, and, um, they're excited. We have a few older ones at the ASP that are looking in the glass all the time, and go, are. Am I almost there yet? Almost there, almost there. We have two that actually could qualify, so they're. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, good work.
To consider a discussion on budgeting priorities for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
So, um, what's happened is Chad and I are slowly, but surely, meeting with every single principal and going down through this year's budget as it stands right now, and saying to ourselves, you know, what lines need to be increased, we know that already. Um, what are they seeing for, I've even asked things like, do we need another staff person? Can we decrease in staff? Some schools are going down, you guys cannot, you're going up. Um, can, this is the time of year to think about, um, different, uh, the different things that need to happen for next year in sort of Tina's world, but we also need to think about the building itself. And what we really need are quotes, so that we can say, all right, this would cost fifty-five thousand dollars, and this would cost ten thousand dollars, and this would cost two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And then do that prioritize, and like you said, what's the most important, what needs to get done? Because obviously, we can't put it all in one budget, you know, I certainly don't even need to say that out loud, but I did. So Tina's had a chance to go through and, and think some things through. We've met with, uh, two of the other principals, I still have three more left. And then I'm bringing it to the board, too, to say, what are you thinking? Because what Chad and I would like to do, and again, Chad's my business manager, um, he knows these budgets inside and out, upside down, and in his sleep, I swear. Um, he, we would like to build it, the initial budget, and bring it to the February meeting. We would like to have it at the February meeting. Um, it won't be finalized, probably, but it would be something to look at and see where we think we need to go. Because, again, we've gotta put increases in for a lot of other things, too.
Well, with that, Mary Ellen, we're resolving half issues, aren't we? We've got new windows, we've got a new pump, we've got new, new, new.
Correct. But you still have siding.
Well, we've got.
We are, but you still have siding.
We are looking up, we're getting there, yes.
From what I heard, it doesn't look great now.
One of the, the biggest budget for the building would be, we need to look into some masonry work. That's probably going, and it's not something that's going to be able to get a lot accomplished in, in one year either, because it's gonna be pretty expensive, as far as the amount of work and the type of work that needs to be done.
So, and this is mostly on the back of building.
Well, you're gonna remember, the majority of our building is brick.
Yes.
All over, so. But I mean, you have, you have to start somewhere.
Right.
Jim being the oldest, might be.
And moving forward.
And so is that that re, what's it called, re-something, when you take out some of the mortar and you put new mortar in?
Yeah, that's what it is, but I'm not.
Repointing, that's what it's called.
Repointing, yep.
And then a lot of it may be some, uh, trim work, and, and we need paint.
Siding. Is the siding still in good condition and can be painted, or is it just gonna peel again? Do we need new siding? What, does anybody know a date on that?
So that out front was painted. Ball peels during, yeah, during COVID, I wanna say.
I think a lot of it is that is, just absorbs much water, that it's to the point that it's not gonna dry out.
And so, yeah, it certainly didn't issue. And so again, a quote on that, have someone come down with the quote, so that we have a ball back figure.
Status of that building in the last three years is, is really coming to the front. Unfortunately, some of it was not by.
Choice.
Yeah.
Not by choice, yeah.
But I mean, overall, there's some really good things happening there.
Absolutely, and I, I wholeheartedly agree with that, from what I've seen, I've only been here six months, so. Um, but if the siding is something that we need to replace, get a good quote. Remember, this would have to go out to bid eventually, these bigger projects that we know about.
Yeah.
Something that just needs a repair, it needs to be fixed right now, you get it done.
And I mean, as long as, I, I think as long as we're prioritizing something and putting it on a timetable for, you know, a one to three, or a three to five, I mean, and we, and we stick with that, you know.
Right.
I think it will take care of itself, and then everything, trailing would be a lot less of a maintenance issue.
I agree.
Well, we're always saying, we've gotten everything almost done. That's what you people keep saying, we're almost done.
We are, windows, doors, boiler, heat pumps.
You've done well. And, and remember, that a lot of that came because of this COVID money. And the COVID money is about done. So now, right, I mean.
So, yeah, so I mean, now it's going to be maintained.
Maintained. And that means that, you know.
That's nothing saying that we can't do capital.
I would say the only thing that didn't come out of COVID money was the roof.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's right.
Everything else, all your windows, doors, boiler, tiles.
Heat pumps.
But there's always something that needs to be.
Always.
A project.
So living, breathing, just like.
Don't like your own house, you know.
The roof needs to replace a lot of it, it needs to be painted.
And it is, and it is a huge building.
It's a big building.
So we all set with, with that? Did you need a vote?
No, no vote.
Okay.
Just discussion.
To consider a discussion on purchasing a grant-funded electric school bus.
Right. So in order for us to work through this grant, I have to have a, um, a motion that you'd like to purchase the electric bus. It doesn't mean we have to in the end, but I have to show that my board is telling me to do this. I will tell you that we're having trouble with the EUI number. That is your unique entity identifier through the government. And when you came over from, now, no, you guys might be different. When everybody else came over from Callis, remember, AOS was part of Callis? When that broke off, many of them have an address that still is Blue Devil.
Is that the number you're looking for?
It is, but it's not, it doesn't jive, it's not working right now.
This was of May of last year.
Yes. And so they have the number, but they can't, it's not matching up with your address. And my understanding is it takes an act of Congress to change that. So they're working on that, that's one holdup that we have, um, on the electric bus. But I do have Leslie in charge of trying to work through that grant process and work on it. It's not a promise whether we'll get it or not. Um, but if we do, do I have your permission to move forward on that? Again, um, because they need that as part of the grant paperwork. Just like in order to get your bond payment, your bond loan, excuse me, you had to have a board motion that you were going to replace.
We voted on it in November, I thought. We made a motion for an electric bus, we made a motion to go to the town for two buses. You said that we couldn't do that, but you did say that if, if a citizen came forward, we could address that.
Right, they have, the citizen has to go to the town.
The town, and that's the town, okay.
So I don't.
But we did talk about the electric.
We talked about it.
We talked about it, but we didn't.
But I don't have a motion from the board, and that's what all these grant types of things take.
Okay, so you need a motion that we are, uh, specifying that you pursue this.
Pursue, yep, that you, um, uh, that, that the board has approved to purchase a grant.
Pursu, yeah, that you, um, uh, that, that the board has approved to purchase a grant-funded, that's why I threw those words in there, grant-funded electric school bus. In other words, if it comes back and it's not gonna be grant-funded, or we're gonna owe $150,000 on it, then we'll, we'll take the break, you know, take the break on it.
So I moved out that we authorize you to pursue a grant-funded electric bus?
Yes.
I'm second with that. Motion then moved by Jane and seconded by Joe to move forward with this electric bus. Any other discussion?
I believe we already did it. I was really good for the staff.
All favor? Five to zero?
And with that, I want to tell you that, um, I, I tried to, um, call the state, I tried to email, and I just get the bounce back on the email that they were on vacation, and no one has contacted me this. But the subs, the two buses that I did apply for subsidy for, say this right now, applied dash round two. And I, again, I don't know a whole lot, I know a lot about the process now. What I believe this means is we were not selected for a bus for subsidy yet. The first round went, and people with the highest need got the bus, and then now, I'm hoping that we're in the round two, so any money left over.
And that's for the.
This is for a handicap, regular diesel bus. Yep, that is the, I mean, I put in for both of our buses to be replaced.
Right.
I put in for both of them, plus we're working on this electrical bus, electric bus, trying to see where we might fall out here in the next month or so. Um, and again, they both say, apply dash round two. And so I asked off order what that means, and he says, it means you didn't get a bus out of the first round, but with money left over, you might get the bus. What I don't know is when we'll know, and that's what I tried to, I, I emailed the state, so.
Okay.
But they've been on vacation, so.
To consider entering executive session pursuant to statutory citation one MRSA 4056A to discuss employment-related matters.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's on there.
Made by Jane, seconded by Joe, all favor? Five to zero?
What do you get for time in?
It is 6:43.
We'll make sure that camera's turned off completely.
And I would love to thank everybody for coming.